Michael Woodley.
Here.
Tommy Freidy.
Here.
Kenny Smith.
Here.
Dusty Maywell.
Here.
Terry Hodges.
Here.
Terry Hickey.
Here.
Tappadini.
Here.
Jordan DeLong.
Here.
Michael Chandler.
Here.
Kel Crane.
Here. Mr. May, will you lead us in prayer?
I'll do it. Dear Father, we thank you for this day, God. We thank you, Lord, and being able to be here, God. And God, I pray that you just help us, just have the minds and the know-how to make the right and good decisions, God, that would best benefit this county. We just give God the praise and glory in Jesus' name.
Amen. Everybody stand up and pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody. Number five, approved disproved minutes of the full commission meeting on Monday, October 27th, 2025.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Ding. Seconded by Mr. Smith. All members in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Motion paid. Number six, approved disproved according to reports for ambulance, BOE, clerk and master, highway department, sheriff's department, and solid waste.
I'll make a motion.
Who's that?
Mr. Hodges.
I'll second.
I thought I said it.
Sorry, excuse me.
Here is clerk master.
No, we don't have it. That is without the ambulance service there also. You wish stick with your motion, Mr. Hodges? We don't have the ambulance as according to reports, do you?
Yeah, I noticed that. We need to wait and get theirs. Approve what we have.
You want to amend your motion just to delete the ambulance service?
Yes.
You still, who's seconded by Mr. Woodley? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Number seven, approved disproved minutes from Committee A meeting on November 3rd, 2025.
All right, Committee A meeting called to order at 5:45. Roll call. Members present were Terry Hickey, Terry Hodges, Kel Crane, and Tappadini. First item, motion made by Terry Hodges, seconded by Terry Hickey to move $35 from $39,000 to 101-56-500-435, office supplies to meet the library's MOE. Roll call. All members voting yes, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
I guess with the roll call, yep.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Dusty Maywell.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Tappadini.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next item, motion made by Kel Crane, seconded by Terry Hickey to approve Van Buren County Schools Fund 880 in the amount as presented. Roll call with all members in favor, and I will make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Dusty Maywell.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Tappadini.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, under new business, motion made by Kel Crane, seconded by Terry Hickey to move $22,100 of opioid abatement funds to the Van Buren County Prevention Coalition for Community Outreach Coordinator. Roll call. All members in favor. This money will come out of 101-51-100-600 from cost center opioid. And I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Anybody have any questions? Roll call, please.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Terry, Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Dusty Maywell.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Tappadini.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Next, motion made by Kel Crane, seconded by Terry Hickey to move $1,500 of opioid abatement funds. And again, is the 101-51-100-600 cost center opioid to the Van Buren County Sheriff's Department's for the dairy program. Roll call. All members in favor, and I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Any question? Roll call, please.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Dusty Maywell.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Tappadini.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
And the meeting was done.
Line number eight, approved disproved minutes from Committee B meeting on November 10th, 2025. Mr. Maywell?
Committee B met Monday, November 10th, 2025. Roll call. All members were present. First item, we discussed funding for the fire departments. All county fire departments were represented, represented. After discussion, Michael Woodley requested all departments to send end cost reports for review. Second meeting was scheduled for January 26th, 2026, at 6 o'clock. No motions was needed on that. New business. Michael Woodley made a motion to set speed limit at Robert Hastings Road to 25 miles per hour, seconded by Kenny Smith. All members were in favor. Was told by Mayor Sullivan that that road already has speed limit times on it at 35.
And that's my fault there because I was trying to get it in for the meeting, and so I take full responsibility.
So would be motion made on that?
No action?
Just scuff it?
I'll make that motion.
All right, so we got a motion to delete. I guess delete this from our minutes because it's not needed. End motion. Michael?
Yeah, I made that motion.
But scrap it if it's not needed? Do you get a second?
I'll second.
All members in favor? Any opposed? There you go, Mr. Smith.
Second, new business here. Kenny Smith made a motion to set a speed limit at the Pine Creek Road to 25 miles per hour, seconded by Michael Woodley. All members were in favor. Make that to the motion, formal motion.
That road goes off of Robert Hastings.
It goes off of Robert Hastings.
Yeah.
It should.
Should be the same speed limit, correct?
If we want to delete that one off, so it would be good.
Retract your motion.
I'll retract the motion to make. The Pine Creek Road at 25.
So you want to delete that from your minutes as well?
Yeah.
I get a second? All in favor? Any opposed?
Motion was made by Michael Woodley adjourned, seconded by Michael Chandler. All members in favor.
Number nine, old business.
Unless you want to.
Would this be, this would be under old business, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, but Linda's would be opposed.
All right, Ms. Starkey, Solid Waste Director, sent a, sent to us, may, have made an amendment to the Van Buren County Solid Waste Uncollectible Accounts write-off policy and procedures. An account will be written off only if the person is deceased and the Van Buren County Commission approves. So that's just an add-in inside the policy?
We took the hardship out because further looking into it, you had to have copies of.
A lot of details?
Yes, stuff that was. Yeah, bank accounts, stuff that we do not need up there. So we took that out and just added that portion of it.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Hickey. Does everybody understand? Any questions? All members in favor? Any opposed?
Yeah, I could probably do that under a business.
The insurance?
Insurance.
Yep. Less than the load of the new business.
Yeah, when, when our broker done our insurance renewal for us, they had based it actually on a $14.50 hourly employee. Our lowest paid is $14.25 for a full-time employee. So y'all had originally approved the 87643 for the employer portion, and that's just on the base plan is the only one it's going to change. So taking it to 1425 hour, it would be 87968 would be the employer's portion.
Got any action on this or any questions? Well, we need to reapprove the change because we're going from 87643 to 87968.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Hickey, seconded by Mr. Woodley. Yep. Can I get a roll call, please, when you get a chance?
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Dusty Maywell.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Tappadini.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Got all of our old business? Is this letter under new? It's two U. Very last word.
Oh, it's about solid waste screen?
Yeah. That was in the back of the.
Oh, doesn't need to come up underneath.
Does anybody else have any old business? Line number 10, new business. I was going to let Ms. Jessica Griston go ahead and start us off.
We just have one item of business, and that's the amendment where this year for our Christmas party, we've sent out letters to local businesses and just asked for help to do our Christmas party this year. And audit says it needs to go through county fund, and so that's all this amendment is. These are a few of the contributors so far, so asking that y'all put that in a line item so we can spend it correctly. You have any questions?
Do we have the line item number?
Yeah, it's the one that for $650.
It's the one from Ben Longman, citizen of Strick County, and the donor.
I'll second.
Anybody have any questions? Roll call, please.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Dusty Maywell.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Tappadini.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Okay, and I have something. Our earmark money every year, I give Kim what's left of it, a local three, and I'm asking for a budget amendment within my budget because I put it in the 599. So I'm asking that for a budget amendment for $1,076.50 to debit $1,076.50 for my line item 101-525-0059, other charges, which is already in the budget, to be moved to credit line 101-52-500-106 in the amount of $1,000. Credit line 101-52-500-201, social security in the amount of $62. Credit line 101-52-500-212, Medicare in the amount of $1,450. And this is that earmark title, local three.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Anybody have any questions? It's something she does every year. Roll call, please.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Dusty Maywell.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Tappadini.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Michael Chandler. Kel Crane.
Yes.
Where would you like to start?
You'll have an amendment. It'll be for $27,758.69. This is the opioid money. We got this the end of 2024. Money's already there. I'm just moving it, asking it to come out of the fund balance and moving it into 51100-600, cost center opioid. That way we can pay the prevention coalition what they ask for and the sheriff's department what they ask for. We just have to move it to that expenditure line item.
I'll make that motion.
Any seconds?
I'll second.
Mr. Hickey? Anybody have any questions? Roll call, please.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Dusty Maywell.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Tappadini.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Second one you'll see is for $55,000. This is our health insurance, medical insurance for the employees. Behind it, you will see where I done the figuring. So to get us through to the end of the fiscal year, we need to move $55,000 from the fund balance to 101-58600-207.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Anyone have any questions? Roll call, please.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Dusty Maywell.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Tappadini.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
This one will be for Fund 116. Each, this is the sanitation fee that Candy Fork gets and Fall Creek Falls get. It's just something for audit to show that it's on the books. So they ask us to estimate the monthly amount that Candy Fork gets plus Fall Creek Falls get. We have to put it into the expenditure line item. It will come from the revenue. For the commercial sanitation, it will come from 43106, debit in $1,500, and it will go into 11655732-358. The other one will be the resident, residential sanitation. It will come from 43107. It goes into 11655732-358. So once Beth receipts that money in at the end of the month, when I do my month-end closeout, I will do a journal entry to actually move this back into that revenue. It just has to show that we're getting it in, and then the journal entry will show that they already have it. It just has to be shown on the books that where it's going. So it really will not be written out of that expenditure line item. It'll just be a journal entry to move it back.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Does anybody have any questions? Roll call, please.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Dusty Maywell.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Tappadini.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
Yes.
Michael Chandler. Kel Crane.
Yes.
The next one will come from Fund 101. It's the UCHRA dues. They're always send it in October. It's an overlook on adding it into the budget. This year, it's asking for it to be debited from the fund balance of $39,000 for the amount of 191208 credited to 101-51100-320 for membership dues for 191208.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Ding. Seconded by.
I'll make that motion. Exactly what she says.
I'll second.
Is that two-wheel drive or four-wheel drive?
The 2017 is a two-wheel drive, ain't it?
No, what, what, the new one?
The one I had.
You did either one.
Yeah.
No, no price difference on either one?
There was, it was like a 34, $100 price difference. I mean, it wasn't.
Is it another Ford? Can we look at some reviews on that truck before we buy?
Well, you could, you could just say.
For $54,000, wasn't it? And that one won't be equipped.
No.
So.
I mean, y'all could say move a total of 50 out of the fund balance, and if it's just 47, the other three goes right back in the fund balance anyway. You know? Because I'd hate to say move 4,700, it'd be 47879, and I have to come back and do another amendment. If you do 50.
I'll make a motion to do 50.
Then it goes back.
To move 50.
Are you retracting the 20,000?
Yes. It'd be the total of 50, the 28 from the ARP. But we're still having to move the other money.
You just say move 50,000 because it's all in the fund balance anyway.
Well, this truck's going to be used to pick up trash with, right?
Yes. Yeah, it's a litter, it's a litter vehicle.
Be the first new one ever.
Yep.
We've took hand-me-downs from the highway department. We got a second? Mr. Chandler? Anybody have any questions for, do roll call?
What are we going to do with the Ford?
That's what I was going to ask.
Put it on, put it on as is, on good deals.
Or do we fix it and use it as a backup?
Just give it back to sheriff.
Take it for scrap.
I don't think we need to fix it, but anyway, I've got the first motion, so let's do it, and we'll go on to the 17 truck.
All right, roll call.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Kenny Smith. Dusty Maywell.
Yeah.
Terry Hodges.
No.
Terry Hickey.
No.
And Tappadini.
Yes.
Jordan DeLong.
No.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kel Crane.
Yes.
Okay, you got three noes, one sustain, and six yes.
Yeah, you don't want to change your vote?
I'll change mine to no.
Four noes, six yeses? No, he changed his vote. Yep.
The reason that I voted no is I don't think we need a new truck. It's like, kind of like my farm truck. If I buy a new truck to put on the farm and beat through the holes, it's going to be beat all to pieces for us everywhere out. I think we need to try to find, and does not bled so county buy some used vehicles out of Missouri and that are reliable, and I think we need to try to find a, a, a reliable used vehicle. That's my opinion now.
My opinion, we need to go with Toyota.
Well, you better put more than 50,000 in if you can go with the Toyota.
They're going to buy a used one.
My thing is, you buy a used one.
People's eyes got used to way trucks having taken, sell them, transmissions coming out of them. Old trucks is coming out of them, transmissions coming out.
And that can be with any of them, but if you buy something, if you buy something and you spend, let's just say 10,000.
He'd spend more than that.
Well, okay, we'll spend 20 then. We'll spend 20. You have it a year and a half. Transmission goes, that's another 5, 6,000. That's 26,000 to just replace that. Did that take majority or two-thirds?
Majority.
Yeah.
Okay, so it passed?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Mr. David, you got a letter you want to go over?
Yeah, while, while we're on.
While we're on garbage?
While we're on garbage. The, uh, trucks that we applied grant for, you know, a few months ago, they supposed to gave us an answer December the 8th, and we finally got the answer today. And we have been awarded the $125,000 toward the purchase of a new truck, garbage truck there, because we've thrown money at the old one on and on.
For three years.
Yes, you know what I'm saying? And so, it, this came through today, and all of you got the information there, on it there, and the, when we got the bid on the other one, it was $224,000. on it there and the, when we got the bid on the other one, it was two hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred, I believe, was the best I can remember, just off the top of my head. And so, I was bringing it to you tonight to see if you wanted to go ahead and pass this here so that we could, when I get the thing from the state, I can go ahead and sign it.
When you get the file?
Yes.
So we're going to put, so everybody knows, right? A hundred thousand dollars with this to purchase a new truck.
Yes.
Hundred twenty-five thousand's a grant. We would take a hundred thousand out of thirty-nine thousand to cover for the brand new truck.
Yes, we'd be buying a new truck for a hundred thousand dollars. Well, actually it'd be probably eighty-five because if we get fifteen or better out of the old garbage truck.
For selling it?
For selling it, then that number's going to drop down even lower.
But we won't sell it until we have this one in hand, right? So.
Right.
Till we have it here.
Well.
Who knows?
Well, they got a timeline on different things here when you can start purchasing, but it's, it's the grant process that you have to go through.
Yeah.
You know, before you get there and I was just trying to get this done now if that's what we wanted to do.
Yeah, just in.
Yeah, we've got it solid waste, solid.
I mean, we have the money in solid waste to take care of.
Money will be coming out of the solid waste.
Yes.
Yes, it'll be coming out of solid waste and we have the money already there. So it's not that we're going to be taking away from our fund balance there as far as, you know what I'm saying? It's the line item that's already there.
Yeah.
But we've already put money on that other one.
We already budgeted to buy a truck.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Anybody have any questions?
All I ask is if we stay away from that pack diesel motor because they are no count.
Well, I can bring it back to the committee.
To the solid waste committee?
To the solid waste committee for you to okay the motor. Because I can't tell you what the motor, the motor's just exactly like the one that's in the truck that we have now.
Yeah, them others ain't no.
Yeah, it's.
The.
It's a Cummins, I'm worried.
Yeah, Cummins or a Cat.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Were you saying the money's in there?
Yes.
It's in the fund balance.
Solid waste is finally able to sufficiently take care of itself without anything else.
And once this has been completely executed, I'll bring an amendment back up to move that from the fund balance into the correct line item.
No further questions? Roll call please.
Michael Woodley?
Yes.
Tommy Freidy?
Yes.
Kenny Smith?
Yes.
Dusty Mabel?
Yes.
Terry Hodges?
Yes.
Terry Hickey?
Yes.
Taffadini?
Yes.
Jordan DeLong?
Yes.
Michael Chandler?
Yes.
Kell Crane?
Yes.
Been busy.
Any other on y'all? Nope, nope. You got some new business?
One minute before you do, I said, I have a letter here from the Highway Department that, uh, Billway Blankenship has given an easement of a hundred and thirty feet in length and thirty feet in width from the Groves Road to Bentley Road, Van Buren County Highway Department. And it's, uh, legal, signed and everything and it just needs to be acknowledged and put in the, in the minutes. Is what he's, that's what Randy told me today. Send that to Lisa.
And also.
It's already done.
Y'all had the paper from the Santa Shop thanking us all for the, what we did for them. Should make sure y'all all seen that. Ladies and gentlemen.
Mayor Austin. Um, I was, um, about five years ago in December, um, I made a deal with the county. They gave me a warranty deed on a piece of property. Uh, essentially written in the deed was, um, property was mine to use up until ten years. Every year, fifty-one hundred and seventy dollars came off that amount. I, um, received a notice of lien in the mail from Mr. Upchurch. I was, I hadn't seen that come in front of the board at, or the commission at all. Um, didn't see that in any of the minutes. I understand that didn't change my deal, but, uh, since then, we've had a couple of private meetings. Um, the commission has, which in general I thought was discussed pending litigation, um, when you have a private meeting. And, um, I've received nothing about pending litigation. Um, I was also been not notified by the county of anything. So, and I've invested about one point seven million dollars into this. So I also have nine employees in our county and, uh, trying to make a decision to run a business over there and I kind of need to know where we're at, if we're going to be having meetings and, and, uh, discussing things, but I'm not involved yet.
Well, executive session meetings involve matters that are in litigation, matters that could be in litigation, uh, matters that are protected by the attorney-client privilege. So, uh, that, that, I think, Mr. Austin answers. Those meetings, executive session meetings are, are just like any other attorney-client meeting. They're closed, they're confidential unless the client agrees to waive the confidentiality. So these were confidential meetings. And, uh, that's really about as far as I can, I can go. Uh, I will say, and I've, I've explained this before, Mr. Austin and I have talked, I don't know, two or three times, I guess, Mr. Austin, about the lien that was filed and. So I've relayed to him the information I can relay to him and as far as I can relay to him as, as county attorney. That's really about all I can, I can say. That may or may not answer your question, uh, Mr. Austin.
So I guess my question is, so is this, uh, is that it? Or, I mean, is, is that the only, uh, going forward? Are we going to have more meetings or are we trying to do something or?
Nothing's been, nothing's been done yet or approved or anything to go forward or anything. It's just been discussion between the board members and the lawyer.
They've been a notice of lien placed against my property.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and that's not been through the county commission, as I understand.
Was up to the lawyer, it is.
That was, uh, and I explained that also, Mr. Austin, you, that was a decision that I made when I reviewed the deed and reviewed the transaction and discovered that Van Buren County was not obligation that is de-Van Buren County, whatever amount that's determined to be agreed upon, that amount, that amount is not, is not secured by a lien on the real property. So that's a decision I made as county attorney for Van Buren County. And I think that's also some things that you and I discussed as well.
Yes, and my only thing is, they've been, I've been getting several phone calls throughout the county. Obviously, people are talking about this. So I, I just want to set the record clear that as of today, I don't owe the county one dollar, correct?
And I can't answer that question, Dr. Austin. I, I don't, I don't, I don't know. Uh, I wasn't involved in, in that deed and the transaction in present when the deed was executed. So, so I don't, I don't know. Uh, it's, it's obvious from the deed that there is some obligation, uh, that the county, uh, is supposed to have secured in some form or fashion. What amount that obligation is, I, I don't know, I can't answer that question.
Anybody answer that question?
If you owe money to the county?
Yes, if I owe, if I owe the county any money right now.
I, I, the way I interpret the deed, the way, the way I read the deed, uh, there is an obligation due. And again, I didn't draft the deed. I'm not criticizing anybody involved in that transaction, but that, that, the, the documents we have are, are about as clear as mud. So, uh, that's about all I know to say, Mr. Austin, about that right now.
Well, what do we need to do to clarify this? You know, I'm trying to run a business over there and.
Well, I, I think, I think, and, and, again, I, I think that does need to be clarified. I think, I think that obligation, if there is an obligation, and I think from the language of the deed, there is an obligation, that obligation needs to be determined. Uh, I think it needs to be determined for you and it needs to be determined for the county.
I, I do now, I interpret that and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if I sell the property, there's an obligation that I pay before ten years, correct? Is that what it states?
I, I think that's, that language is part of the language in, in the, in the deed. I, I don't think that language is clear enough to define what your obligations are, uh, if any, and what rights the county has, if any. I think that's the whole crux of the issue that we're struggling with right now.
I guess my, my, I guess my question to the county commission is, we've had two committee meetings since then. We've had two private meetings since then and nobody's mentioned a word about it. And how can you decide what it's going to be if you don't discuss it? I'm here to make an offer that I've held the property approximately five years and in December. So if you take the original amount of fifty-one thousand seven hundred dollars, that the value of the property that states in the deed and five years off that, which fifty-one hundred and seventy dollars as stated in the deed does come off that, which is referenced by the notice of lien, that would also come approximately to about twenty-six thousand dollars. Now, if I paid that twenty-six thousand dollars, you going to give me a clear deed for that property?
Was it ever voted on in the previous commission for that amount? The, the amount of fifty-one thousand seven hundred dollars?
That, that's one of the big issues that, that I have as, as county attorney on the resolutions and the minutes, county government, board of county commissioners can only speak through the minutes for the resolutions and, and so those, those lack clarity as well. Said those lack, those lack clarity as well. The county can only speak through its minutes or its resolutions and those act, lack clarity as well. I would like to say, Mr. Austin, your, your reference to private meetings is, is somewhat demeaning to the county and to the commissioners. The commissioners are not meeting privately. They're meeting in executive session, which the law permits and Roberts Rules of Order permits. So I want to clarify that because I don't want anybody here to think that the board of county commission is doing something that violates any provision of the Public, Public or Open Meetings Act or any other provision of the law. They are, they are authorized, obligated, permitted to meet with their attorney or an attorney in executive session, which is a closed meeting. It's not a private meeting, it's a meeting that's closed to the public. Uh, so.
I understand that, but thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Austin.
So I, I guess my question goes back to the other. Are there going to be any resolution on this at all? I mean, the county, a couple of people sitting on the board voted on that. I think it was total public knowledge that everybody knew and now, five years later, we've come to this. So I guess what I'm asking for is a resolution, something by the county commission to decide. I have a, a business, two businesses running in the county over there that I need some resolution on to make decisions.
I don't think this, I don't think this board will go any further without any other evidence to make a decision, Mr. Austin. I believe I could speak for everybody on that. With not all the evidence that we're getting and got in the past, that's why there's not been a decision made. If that makes sense.
I, it does, but I don't think there's going to be any more evidence come forward, Mr. Crane.
We hope not.
So that's, I mean, that's my only thing is, you only have the meetings, committee A or committee B meetings and the minutes of the county commission and, and of a warranty deed.
We have committee A, committee B, and then the commission.
Okay.
Yeah. But as far as, um, the minutes, the question was, is the minutes and the warranty deed lining together? And they did not. That's what started it. So, um, we just received a letter from, um, Mr. Upchurch tonight that we're reading, so.
I'm not going to chance to read it.
Until I get to read that, I don't know. I don't know if everybody else has read it.
But to answer your question, there's not been any action and I don't think anybody's going to make any action until we have everything in, in line to give that action.
Okay, well, that was my only question.
If I may add one more thing, Mr. Austin. Just to take one step further on executive session. After executive session, if the board of county commissioners makes any decision, sorry. After executive session, if the board of county commissioners in open meeting, if they decide to take any action or take any position whatsoever, they have to do it in an open meeting. And it's not, they, they won't make that decision in executive session.
I, I do understand that. My, my question is, when I'm trying to run a business, I, I need resolution on this and the county, I, I believe owes me that to give that.
I understand.
I withheld my side of the bargain as it stated in that warranty and now it seems like the county's backing out on their part.
Yeah, I, I made note of the fact that, that you, you borrowed about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars through farm credit.
Not only that, I've also added in several hundred thousand of my own money if people's been over there, so.
Well, we'll do comments from the public, we'll go on to line eleven, comments from the general public.
We have several things under the business.
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry.
You want me to address those?
Yes, go, go right there.
There are two resolutions that I presented. The first one is the resolution involving, uh, a policy for cremation of unclaimed human remains and, uh, we've kind of found ourselves in a situation before what to do about these, uh, these situations. They've occurred in the past. Uh, so, so this simply establishes that when there are unidentified human remains or when they're identifiable for which of family members are unknown and cannot be ascertained or, uh, which are unclaimed by known family members, uh, those remains will be cremated and the policies are that the county mayor, uh, each and every fiscal year and May before the fiscal year is to solicit bids, uh, from, uh, entities that provide cremation services. Those bids will be presented to you for approval. Uh, and if in fact cremations take place or if in fact after cremations take place, uh, family members come forward to claim the remains or claim the remains before cremation, it requires the family members to reimburse Van Buren County for the expenses that they've incurred and that would be either prior to cremation or after cremation. So that's, that's essentially what the resolution provides for.
So it's only for the cremation and not any transportation to the, for cremation or anything?
It would include all of those expenses.
All of that, okay.
Yes, ma'am, and even, even the expenses we incur, uh, for example, to recover the remains. All, all of those are included in that reimbursement provision. It says in conjunction with the recovery, preservation and/or cremation of the remains. That's the language that's used in the, in the resolution. And this is, I did not have any, any.
And this is really, that I did not have any, anything to go by. I've never seen such a resolution before. I understand from talking to Mayor Sullivan, why, why we would require and need such a resolution, so uh, that's the best I can do. I'll certainly change it or amend it if you, if the commission believes it, uh, it's not correctly or artfully enough drafted. Another document that I take no pride in authorship. I, I don't have any ego about this one.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution as presented.
I'll second.
Any questions, anybody? Roll call, please.
Michael Woodley?
Yes.
Tommy Freedy?
Yes.
Kenny Smith?
Yes.
Dusty Maple?
Yes.
Terry Hodges?
Yes.
Terry Hickey?
Yes.
Tappedadini?
Yes.
Jordan DeLong?
Yes.
Michael Chandler?
Yes.
Kell Crane?
Yes.
Next resolution is, uh, I prepared this as a request to Sheriff Brock. Uh, there is a company, Flock Safety Security Cameras, uh, which has been endorsed by the state of Tennessee. Apparently, there's some funding available right now. Uh, they're a company that essentially allows visual monitoring devices to be placed on the roads and thoroughfares of, of any county or municipality, uh, for the use for law enforcement purposes only. This resolution essentially, uh, endorses the use of, of those devices in Van Buren County and authorizes the sheriff to obtain further information regarding the acquisition and installation of those cameras and visual devices, and then to present the information to the county, for the county to make a final decision as to whether or not they want those devices used and installed in Van Buren County.
These are essentially license plate readers, correct?
I'm not sure what they are. I, I don't, I don't-
The majority of it, yeah.
I know, I know, I've tried a, a couple of murder cases in the past two years where they do more than read license plates. They're, they're, they're pretty effective.
They're big in amber alerts, too, on vehicles.
Motion to approve as presented.
Also a privacy concern there.
Yes.
There's also some privacy concerns there, too, and I, I trust Mr. Brock on it, but I don't like the idea.
Ms. Denny made motion to approve. I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
No one.
You have anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the general public or anything? All right, we've been requested to go into executive session, so if everybody please leave the room, shut off Facebook.